Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the three hundred and forty states, one nation, with liberty, peace, and freedom of the people. And justice for all.
At this time, I am pleased to administer the oath of office for our newly elected and re-elected members, Mike Sefalato, Jan Streggi, and Bill Kent. Will you all please stand?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. And we have an oath for each of you to sign. It's Bill, Jan, and Mike.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The first order of business is the election of board officers. I will now entertain nominations for the President of the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'd like to nominate Mike Sefalato for President, and I'd also like to thank Michael for doing such a great job.
I second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I declare that closed, and we need a roll call vote for this, so we'll go around the table. Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Absolutely.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. And would you stand for your oath of office?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And here's another oath for you to sign. And the next order of business is to nominate a Vice President for the 2017-18 school year.
I'd like to nominate Tammy Gerofsky.
And I second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Poll is closed. Congratulations. Will you please stand for your oath?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
Do they have to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's try one more time.
I forgot to do a roll call vote. Tell me about that.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Thanks, Carmen.
Actually, thanks, Scoop.
And I've got an oath for you, or oath to sign. Let's see, and that's for Tammy. And then I now turn the meeting over to Mike Sefalato.
You gave me the district clerk.
Oh, no.
That's right.
You shouldn't have president.
So then...
And then this is for superintendent?
I do the superintendent, and you...
Yep, and clerk.
All right.
Okay, and I turn the meeting over to Mike.
All right.
And that's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I can just sit right here. All right, now we are going to do the oath, or the oath of office for our superintendent. So Carmen, please stand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations, Carmen.
Thank you.
You need to sign that. And Cindy, we're also going to do now you as the district clerk. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations, and you also, since you know this, have to sign one.
Oh, you have to sign it. I said, you have to sign it.
Sorry. Then that means you have to sign, we're just playing musical chairs right now. I have to sign these two, but you have to sign. Give this to Cindy to sign.
Next.
All right. Now that everyone is sworn in, let's move on to some of our district appointments. And board members, if it pleases you, I'd like to take these as a Roman numeral and try to go through them that way. So our first district appointments are from letter A all the way through letter Z, from, if my computer would just let me move here a little bit, and it's being very, Sue, is your computer being fussy?
Nope, we want to use mine.
Man, this, it's just not letting me move. From District Treasurer all the way down to, actually, it goes farther than Z, all the way down to letter double F, our National Medical Review Officer. May we have a motion, please, to accept these? Thank you, a second?
And a second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's take a look at our district designation. This is depository of district funds. There are a number of banks from J.C. Morgan, Canadagua, M&amp;T, Key Citizens, First Niagara, Genesee, and the IC Network Banking System. Did I get them all, I hope? Good. May we have a motion, please, to accept that?
So moved.
Oh, they're not, they're off? Yeah. All right, so, all right, we'll make that amended motion, that First Niagara is off.
So...
Okay.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on that particular case. And once again, the computer is slowing down. Oh, gosh. Let's move on to, we'll take letter B, the posting. The district administration's office is our official location for posting of our agenda. Our official newspaper is the Webster Herald, as well as the people who can administer petty cash in each of our buildings. May we have a motion, please, to accept those?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, a second?
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The manager of food service will be the person authorized to sign school lunch agreements. May we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, second?
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we also have a number of necessary resolutions. Most of them are the fact that the superintendent and/or the board president can sign all these particular legal documents. It goes all the way through to letter I. May we have a motion, please, to accept that?
No.
Thank you, and a second here.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fees and charges. Board, what's your preference? Do you want to go through them separately, or can we take them all as one unit? Lump them all together? Okay, so it's going from athletic charges for admission, to rental of buses, to rental of music instruments, to the actual price of school lunches, to school breakfasts, and to fees that we charge for people to use our facilities. May we have a motion, please, to accept those?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Jan seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We also have salary actions. We are paying $100 for our substitute teachers. We're also paying for our adult help, which is, as of January 1, 2018, will move because of the minimum wage situation. We have our community programs, particularly our lifeguards and our monitors and our water safety people, and our supervisors, and our class instructors. May we have a motion, please, to accept? Oh, question? I see everybody had an increase this year in that list except for substitutes. It's the same across the board.
Under leave substitutes?
I'm looking at the $100s a day.
Substitute teachers.
Yeah, but they don't get a raise. They don't get an increase?
That is, we're right in the median to a little bit above median with where we're in.
Compared around the county?
Compared around the county.
They went up last year.
Yeah.
We went from 90 to 100.
We've done increases.
So instead of every year, we do it every, just like everybody else? Okay.
And we don't have a shortage of substitutes?
Well, we do. All of Monroe County does.
All of them.
Yeah.
But since we pay above average, we don't.
Well...
We still have a shortage.
We still have a shortage.
Well, I know. But it's not because of what we pay.
Right. We could, you could make that $200, and we'd still have a shortage.
Still a shortage.
So, okay.
We don't want to do that.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Not suggesting we do it, just trying to make a point, that's all.
What's the savings between a teacher and the day or substitute? Sort of big savings?
Substitute $100 a day, and if you look at...
Starting salary...
Starting salary at 45.
Divided by two.
So you're probably looking at 175?
No.
No. What's, if we, starting...
It's divided by 200, isn't it?
It's gotta be 210.
It's 210, I'd say 210.
If you analyze it out, if somebody subbed every day at that rate, just show it to the door, it's about $25,000 difference.
You know a lot of substitutes, that's all I guess. All right. Did we have a motion, in a second, for the salary actions?
No.
No. May we have a motion, please, for the salary actions? Thank you. Second?
And a second?
Thank you. All in favor of salary actions?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. One opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to, what is, oh, other actions. The annual election vote will be held Tuesday, May 15, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Schrader High School Gymnasium. Can we accept that, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that takes care of our reorganization meeting. And now we will move on to our regular business. I see no visitors in the audience, so we'll move off that and move into our instructional report, which is the superintendent's.
We have to add two.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yes, before we move on, we have to approve the agenda. We are adding two pieces of information. One will be in the consent agenda, so it'll probably be number eight. Roman numeral six, letter B, number eight. And we'll do board business, Roman numeral five, letter A. We'll make it, want to throw it in there, 1B?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make it 1B. May we have a motion, please, to accept the agenda with the amendments?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion stands, and our agenda is changed, so we still can move into our superintendent's report, which Carmen will give in just a second.
I think, maybe. We'll do it just in case. That's the resolution that we'll get to at 1B, but, okay. Okay, thanks, Carmen.
So our annual reorg meeting means our board and our district is gearing up for another exciting school year. With my first official board report for the new year, though, I wanted to spend just a few minutes celebrating the final moments of the 1617 school year and praise our newest alumni. Let's see, 660, I think, 662 new alumni, and it's the members of the class of 2017. I had the honor and pleasure of shaking the hand of all 662 of those graduates as they cross the stage at RIT's Gordon Fieldhouse, and some of them, including my daughter, Gracie, even got hugs that were accompanied by a few tears, but I got through it. I say this with great sincerity. This really is my favorite day of the year, the graduation day. The pictures you are seeing right now give you a glimpse as to why I love this day and these graduates. The events and energy of Graduation Sunday are simply exhilarating, from the moment those soon-to-be graduates process into the fieldhouse, accompanied by the traditional pomp and circumstance, and then they exit, elated and exuberant, to participate in the traditional cap toss at the bottom of the hill. If you didn't get to celebrate with our graduates in person, you can watch both ceremonies on Channel 15, as they are now running three times a day, and you can see the schedule here. You can also watch both ceremonies on the district's website, websterschools.org/grad17. That link is up on your screen now. So thank you, class of 2017, for sharing the past 13 years of your lives with all of us here in Webster. Remember that you're always part of our one Webster family, and we look forward to seeing what's next for all of you. Congratulations, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Carmen.
Yes, graduation was very, very, very nice. Yep.
It was awesome.
All right, move on to our new business. We do have two resolutions prepared by our attorneys for the purpose of settling pending tax sussuretori proceedings. The first involves the M&amp;T Bank, and the second involves Wegmans. Brian, do you have any comments on those?
Just that it's waiving all refunds, and have, I've outlined some of the details for each case with you, that these have gone back several years, and we've come to resolution on both the M&amp;T Bank and Wegmans located at Holt Road.
Questions from the board? May we have a motion, please, to accept these two resolutions?
I'm sorry, one question. I read them, but I don't remember, is there a timeframe before they can be challenged again?
Typically, it's three years.
Okay. And that's what these two are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Motion, please, to accept the resolutions?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sue, second. Thank you, Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those two motions carry. We also have a resolution pending litigation pursuant to a proposed settlement agreement that would authorize the necessary signing of documents. This is based on legal counsel.
This is what we just discussed in the executive session.
Yes.
Thanks. So this settlement agreement, does it need a roll call vote, or no? Okay, it just needs the, okay, never mind. Just want to make sure that we were following protocol.
Okay. Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the proposal? Thank you, second?
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have our internal audit report, which was reviewing our procedures and the related controls over processing receipts from our Aquatic Center. This includes revenues from the pool operations, as well as our community education program. We did receive a few recommendations, which we have been putting into place, if we haven't already. Brian, would you like to summarize this, please?
Sure. The Aquatic Centering community historically has always operated kind of on their own, since the Aquatic Center was an original joint partnership with the town of Webster. So the books for the Aquatic Center were always kept separate from the school districts. And since it's become a solely school district entity, we, in the last couple of years, have tried to start incorporating it into the normal district process. And so one of the things that came out of our audit from Ray Wager a couple of years ago was some issues around cash control and them being separate. So we've kind of accelerated that through the help with our internal auditors. They went over and looked at the process and gave us some suggestions, things we could do better moving forward. So I've outlined some of those for you. One of those you saw during the reorg, it's as simple as creating a petty cash drawer for the register over there, because it's unique. They have walk-up sales, which is unusual for a school district to have that. So to have a starting cash balance to help with reconciliation on a daily basis was one of the main issues. And we're looking at a couple other things as well, a new point-of-sale system that can reconcile easier to clean up those processes.
Questions from the board? Then we have a motion, please, to accept the internal audit review?
So moved.
Thank you. Bill seconds. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, we seem to have some money. Will you tell us about the treasurer's report?
Sure. Treasurer's report for the month of April. April is usually a large cash flow month. We get our final payment made whole by the county, so you'll see why our real property taxes being paid in April. That is always the time when the county makes us whole for any unpaid taxes. And we also do get a nice chunk of state aid as well, and a lot of grant money comes in that month as well. So we see some of that cash flow come through in the due from other funds and other governments. And that, not much more.
Questions from the board? May we have a motion, please, then, to accept the treasurer's report? Thank you, Bill, and second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our cleaners, custodians, and maintenance association ratified a four-year collective bargaining agreement in June. It now comes before the Board of Education for approval. Brian, would you care to give us any highlights of this agreement?
Sure. It's a four-year contract lasting until June of 2021. One of the major changes would be the health care for all new members, starts as the high deductible plan, starting July 1 of 2017. And all returning members will have the option to join during open enrollment, but all of them will be moving January 1 of 2019. So in 18 months, it will become the base plan for all members. Salaries are in line with some of our other contracts that we've recently settled as well. So generally, a couple different things here and there that would pertain to cleaners and custodians, as far as clothing allowance, little different nuances. Generally, the framework around finances and health care are very in line with our other bargaining units.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Seeing none, may we have a motion, please, to accept the contract agreement? Accept. Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have the Association of Educational Office Professionals ratifying a four-year collective bargaining agreement. It now also comes before the Board of Education for approval, so Brian, once again?
Sure. Very similar to the structure of the CCMA agreement. This will also go to four years through 2021. One of the reasons why you might wonder why 2021 for both of them, that is the year where minimum wage could swing significantly, up to $15 an hour. So it was kind of an incentive, common point to go to, to see, for bargaining purposes, what's going to happen on the state, and you know, what's going to force our hand and mandate us in that aspect. Also similar, all new members, starting July 1 of 2017, that are hired, will be moving to the high deductible plan as their base plan, and all returning members will be moving by January 1 of 2019 as well, as their base plan.
Thank you, Brian. Questions from the board? I got one question. Is minimum wage is going to go up and hit that $15 mark possibly?
Right.
Okay, and you've got a new person coming in making $15 an hour, and we've had people here for a while making that range right now. Is there going to be a differential between those people moving up also?
That, that will be, to be determined.
In 2021.
In 2021.
Okay.
That could be a negotiating item.
Correct.
Okay.
I can't imagine that they won't ask.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out if we're getting our...
We've had that situation already with one of our, with our food service.
Okay.
That it's escalated over people that have been here. So we've, through negotiations, worked out mutually beneficial increases that were...
For people that have been here.
For people that have been here.
It's only fair, right? Other questions? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the contract?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we move on. Presently, Webster holds an access easement near our bus garage east of Hard Road. The district has determined that we no longer need this easement, and thus, we are seeking to release the district's interest in this easement. Brian, any comments on that resolution?
Now, we were approached by the developers on the other side that they would like to have access for that easement, to finish off the development of the property that's just to the south of the bus garage, if you run, that gravel driveway going off Hard Road and back in there. And really, the ease, having the easement from originally when we had the property, really doesn't do anything for us by having that easement. It doesn't benefit us. We looked at it from a long-range planning for the bus garage. They wouldn't, by giving up the easement, it wouldn't hurt us in any way for what we want to do, or can do, or have to do into the future. So we are, we will gladly turn over that easement to the developers, so they can finish off the property to the best capacity that they can.
Does it affect our taxes on that piece of property at all?
It does not.
Clear. Okay. Are they paying us for the easement?
It's a dollar. It's a dollar. It's not, it's not worth much.
How much property is it? How much property are we talking?
It's just the access.
It's just...
It's not our property, but we just have the right, it's just the right to access it. Right, and so...
So someone else pays taxes, huh?
Right. If we impeded, we could stop them from fully developing, because we have the right to that easement, but we don't need it. So why stand in the way?
Do you need to pass it all?
No.
We just said had it.
We've just had the right to access that.
Okay. We've thought this through totally?
Yes.
Hate to give up anything if it's not... Went through legal, went through legal counsel.
Yeah, and our architects and engineers as well. They're the ones that really were...
I didn't say that, but I feel better now. Other questions? All right, then may we have a motion, please, to accept the resolution regarding the release of access easement?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
And a second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, move on to our board liaisons. We'll first look at the Monroe County Legislative. Does anyone want to be a representative? Does anyone want to be a representative? We actually are allowed two voting members. I will be at all meetings, but I am a non-voting member.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
Unless there's a tie. And I've never seen a tie. Have you ever seen a tie?
No, there, there's usually not any issues. I mean, not, nothing significant.
Is this the one that meets Wednesday at noon, you said?
Yes, uh, the, the following meetings all meet on Wednesdays at noon at the, I don't even know what it, it used to be the.
Yeah, the Lexington and.
Now it's the Ramada? Okay. Now it's the Ramada. All right, so we're gonna put a question mark there. Uh, labor relations. I know, because usually, uh, Linda, Tammy, or I showed up.
I, I was on the other one with Suzie, but, um.
Mike, I don't think you could make any of these meetings at noon. I really don't.
Noon's tough.
All right, so that's gonna le, leave a question mark. Tammy, you are on Information Exchange, 'cause you are a co-chair.
Yep.
Thank you very much for doing that, by the way.
Look forward to that.
I'll do labor.
You're gonna do labor relations? Thank you.
I'll, I'll give it a whirl.
I also think if, um, not putting words in Bill's mouth, but being the newbie.
I look forward to the opportunity.
If, if there was a committee that would benefit you the most, it would be Information Exchange, I believe.
Sounds great.
All right, so then you can put down Bill on that. Executive Committee, it's gonna be myself and Karen. Steering Committee will be myself and Karen. Uh, Audit Committee, I guess I'm still on it. Tammy, you gonna?
Sure, I can be.
It's, it's up to you. All right.
Sure. When, when do they meet?
We usually meet on a Monday or Tuesday. Because we have five or six community members, we usually meet the, at a time that is convenient for them, and it's usually been around four-thirty or five o'clock.
I mean, yeah, I, I would, I think I can do that one. I can do that one.
All right.
You know what?
Generally, four times a year.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll do that, and then you don't have to.
You know, we, we meet with Ray Wager and.
Sure, yeah. I've done it before, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Uh, Budget Advisor, should we try to do it like we did last year, where we kinda rotated and everybody?
I think that's a good idea.
All right. Policy, Sue. No one's gonna chair this but you.
Well, I, if, if someone really wants the opportunity, you know, we can discuss it.
I think you do a great job, Sue. I enjoy being on there with you. There's always a lot of great information. You do a great job. We're looking forward to you continuing.
Sure.
Continue. I'm, I'm gonna be honored.
Okay, so who else wants to be on it? Only one more person.
Just me.
No, we, we're, we can have another board member. We can have up to three.
What about Bill?
And when do we, when does that meet?
Um, we usually take it on to prior to a board meeting, and it meets three to four times a year.
I could do that.
You know, October-ish.
It's actually pretty interesting. Honestly, gosh.
Well, in your endorsement, Mike, I'm, I'm interested.
She's gotta do it now.
Oh, my gosh, I'm telling you, I enjoy it.
When, Sue, when do we ever change it, when to assets? Or is that just a typo?
I think it's, I think it's, it used to be assets. I'm not sure it was changed.
Yeah, 'cause I can't remember.
So.
Assets was like.
Thursday at noon, right?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, I wasn't on this one last year.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, you were involved.
Ann just went last year.
It's the first time I met you.
Um, when? I actually think someone from the board should be involved with this, because it, they are tackling some very, very important.
Yes, that's at noon on Thursdays.
Noon at the aquatic center.
Yeah, it's every month.
But I think it's a very valuable.
Okay, Linda's gonna do that.
Good, thank you, Linda.
And then if you wanna call me if you can't go.
Sure.
So I'll be a.
And then if Sue can't go, she usually calls me and.
This is the one that's fused in with.
The coalition?
Yeah.
Coalition for Dirt Awareness and Prevention.
Yeah, yep, I'll do that one.
I think it's a very important, thank you. It's a great organization.
Okay, no, I have no problem.
All right, Strategic Planning Committee. Sue, again, I'm assuming you're going to.
I would like to.
When does that meet?
Um, it's as needed.
Jan would like to be on it?
I would like to be on it as well.
All right.
So this is the core team, and then we have sub-teams as well. But I think the best thing to do, you guys come to the first core team meeting, and then we can decide if you wanna spring off to a different committee, do both, whatever.
All right, move on to our PTSA building assignments. Um, Tammy, do you still wanna do Duett?
Sure, yes.
All right. Uh, Mike, do you still wanna do Plank North?
I'd like to move.
You wanna move?
Yeah. And I, and the only reason why, you know, I like to see what other schools are doing.
Okay.
If that's possible.
No, we, we can, we can move you.
I'm happy to move too. I mean, I like, I like it, it's convenient, but.
I love Plank North, they're great people, but.
Uh, Linda, do you still wanna do Plank South?
Yes.
Yeah, she's there, please.
And you said you might wanna change.
I, well, I didn't say I wanted to change, I, but I said I would change.
Jan, do you still wanna do?
Clem North.
Clem North?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, it doesn't.
We, we, we don't have to change. I mean.
No, well, we, we gotta figure out where we're gonna put Bill.
Oh. Yeah, okay, let's try that.
All right, they actually.
Where was Ann?
She was at State Road.
State Road.
That's a really, that's a good one, too.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
You wanna do State then?
Sure, I'll do State.
All right, you do State, and then Bill, I'm gonna give you the choice between Clem South and Plank North, and I'll take whichever one you don't want. All right? Got it?
So am I staying or?
Well, unless you wanna, you wanna.
No, no, that's fine.
'Cause we can move that. Now, in the past, the president and the vice president did the, the secondary schools, because they don't really have PTSA meetings. They have coffee with the principal, and they think they only have it twice a year. And the president and vice president shared that. So Tammy, are you interested in doing that, or should we?
Sure, so each secondary school had two, like a five?
Well, they try to have two. They may not have two.
Okay.
And usually, the high schools have been in the evening, and then middle schools have been in the morning. That's been their, their practice.
So easier for parents to get to in the evening?
Uh.
No?
No.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't it matter when you have middle school or high school?
The same people.
Yeah.
The same, the same ground.
I'd be happy to participate in it also.
You want to?
Sure.
That's fine.
I know you're trying to limit my.
Do you, do you have a, a specialty? Like, do you wanna do Schrader, or are you willing to do Spry and Schrader, or you wanna go across town and try Thomas and?
I could walk to Thomas.
I know, well, that's.
But Schrader feels like home, so.
Feels like home?
Sure.
All right. So you wanna do all four or just one? Since you.
If we're split, if, if, if we're splitting it up, that sounds, just add me to that and we'll just draw straws.
We'll just, we'll just add you to it.
Sure.
That sounds great.
That's fine, that's fine.
That would be fun.
That's great. All right, I think that takes care of everything there. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at this. It consists of the recommendations that were made by the superintendent concerning personnel actions, concerning tenure, concerning probationary, uh, certified regular substitutions, certified temporary classified appointments, leaves of absence, resignations, retirements. It also consists of the recommendations on the Committee on Special Education, as well as the recommendations on the Committee on Preschool Education. There are some CSE appointments. There was a district organizational chart. You know what, I almost wanna pull that one out for a second, just to talk, well, let's, just move to the district organizational chart, because this, um, we've had some questions in the past, particularly about where that line is, that the board said they are interested in interviewing. And I'm trying to find it.
I think it might have been the last.
It's getting, yeah, it's way, I'm.
Second to last. Okay.
I'm still not there.
Right before the bid. I have it on mine.
All right. The only thing that I'm, um, if you look at the line where it says principal, does the supervisor for district safety, is that on the same line?
It is for supervisory purposes, but.
But it's not really?
But no, it's definitely not.
You know where I'm going with this, Karen. I'm trying to make sure the board understands at what point we no longer are involved with the interview process.
So typically, as over the last few years, principals, the, um, the board members have been involved in the selection process and, and in the interview process of principals and above. And so if you think of, if you think of my senior team, which is the deputy superintendent and three assistant superintendents, that's one level below me, and then just one level below them are the principals, and then there are a whole bunch of, of levels below the principals. So the board was involved in interviews, in the interview process for principals and above. So you guys have sat in, you sat in for the selection of Mr. Freeman, uh, and we haven't hired a deputy superintendent or a assistant superintendent or pupil services or H R, um, since, since we started this process a few years ago.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, yeah, they, they were, they're on, sorry, yeah, thank you, Bill. So, the question is, do you, does the board want to be involved?
With another box.
Correct. And my recommendation is, we keep it where it is right now, that the board is involved in principals and above, and that you do not become involved in the selection of assistant principals and the like.
You want the board to understand what we're voting on?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you're voting on it right.
Well, we, we, we're voting on accepting of that.
Right, of the chart.
The chart. All right, so that's also in the consent agenda, as well as a cooperative bid for music equipment, as well as a, uh, what do we, we added, um, oh, gosh, we added a. Personnel agreement.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, please? Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have a board meeting, actually, it's not a board meeting, it's a board retreat on Tuesday at twelve-thirty. Uh, and then our next scheduled regular meeting is not until August third. With that being said, may we have a motion, please, to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.